Well, good morning. Board of Commissioners in session. Today is May thirteenth. The time is nine o'clock. All three Commissioners are present. Could you identify yourself over here for the record?
Rob Brown, Treasurer's Office.
Tim Klein, Treasurer's Office.
Bob Carney, Operations?
And Mayor of Procurement.
Josh Brown, Operations.
Richard Beck, Public Services.
IT guy, real IT guy.
He is reporting with the Clerk's Office.
Bob Perkins, Attorney.
Beth Maugh, Treasurer.
Okay, well, thank you. Good morning. Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are none.
Okay, well, the first item on the business is unfinished business. I'll accept the motion to remove the unfinished business from the table.
Chairman, I move we remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye? Motion carries. It's a word of bid for Ada County Benjamin Election Switchboard Replacement. Go ahead.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. We received two bids for this project and the evaluation team has reviewed these bids. And we do have a recommendation for award letter for your consideration.
Could you read the letter for the record?
Yeah, I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
It's a letter dated May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five to the Board of Ada County Commissioners, from Ada County Procurement regarding bid two five zero four two. Dear Members of the Board, after reviewing the Benjamin, it is the recommendation of the evaluation group to award the contract for bid two five zero four two to Twin City Electricians Incorporated as the lowest responsive bidder in the amount of two hundred seventy-three thousand, nine hundred thirty dollars.
Okay, is there any questions or discussions? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to accept the recommendation of the Evaluation Committee in award bid two five zero four two to Twin City Electric in the amount of two hundred and seventy-three thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars.
I second the motion.
Thank you. It's Twin City Electricians.
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there any other questions? Hearing none, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have a resolution. I'll open the public hearing on Resolution three zero nine one, Resolution for the Sale of Person Property Owned by Ada County. It's office items, chairs and stuff. Mile cap. Okay. Any questions or comments on this resolution? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on Resolution number three zero nine one and accept the motion.
I move to approve Resolution number three zero nine one as listed on the agenda.
Second. Yeah, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye? Motion carries. All right, now we have a couple more procurements.
Yes, we do.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Bob.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, under new business this morning, we have three items. The first of which is opening of RFP two five zero five one, the Ada County Jail Health Services Electronic Medical Records. And this is ready to open if you guys are ready for us to do so.
Ready, Evan's ready.
Mr. Chairman, since these are proposals, we'll just be reading the name of the proposers into the record this morning.
Okay.
So we have nine proposers and Evan, can you see? Yeah, there you go. Our first proposer is Advanced Correctional Healthcare, Alter Digital Health, Autonomy Today LLC, doing business as Cadmus, CNT Info Tech Corporation, Core EMR LLC, Fusion Medicalistics, Sapphire Health LLC, and our final proposer is Softgur. So, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, we'll need a little time to review these proposals. And we would like to request that this be tabled for award recommendation to the June tenth, two thousand twenty-five Open Business Meeting.
Okay, any questions? Okay, I'll accept the motion.
I'll move to table the award of RFP two five zero five one to June tenth, two thousand twenty-five.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Go ahead, two five zero five six.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, our second item is the opening of bid two five zero five six, the Ada County Mosquito Incesticide Products Purchase. And Evan has our bonfire queued up if you're interested.
Go ahead, Evan. You got a room on the screen?
Yeah, we're gonna have quite a few line items here. So we'll just be reading the name of the bidders into the record. We'll follow up with our bidders on the opening summary and where they fell with regards to their bids. Do you want to read it off from here or you want it on the spreadsheet? Right here is fine. So our first bidder is Clark Mosquito Control Products Incorporated. Our second bidder is Target Specialty Products. And our third bidder is Visaris. And those are our three bidders. And Evan will go through and check for administrative requirements and also be sitting out an opening summary to these bidders. So they'll know exactly what, who bid what during the bids.
Okay.
So we'll need a little time to evaluate. So we'd like to request that this be tabled for award recommendation to the May twentieth, two thousand twenty-five Open Business Meeting.
All right. All right, I'll accept the motion.
I move to table bid two five zero five six to the May twentieth Open Business Meeting.
I'll second that. Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye? Motion carries, thank you. Now we'll have a review of bids received and award recommendations for public projects, fifty to two hundred thousand dollars.
Go ahead, Mr. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, our final item under new business is bid two five zero five two, the Ada County Sheriff's Community Transition Center Fire Alarm System Replacement. And we received one response for this project. And we would like to submit this recommendation of award for your consideration. Okay? It's a letter dated May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five to the Board of Ada County Commissioners, from Ada County Procurement regarding bid two five zero five two. Dear Members of the Board, Ada County Procurement received one response for bid two five zero five two. The following is the name of the bidder and the bid amount submitted. The bidder is Power Plus Incorporated, and they have a total bid amount of ninety-six thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars. And after reviewing the bid submitted, it is the recommendation of the Evaluation Group to award the contract for bid two five zero five two to Power Plus Incorporated as the lowest responsive bidder for the total bid amount of ninety-six thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
Okay. Is there any questions or issues? Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to accept the recommendation of the Evaluation Committee in award bid two five zero five two, Ada County Sheriff's Community Transition Center Fire Alarm System Replacement to Power Plus Incorporated in the amount of ninety-six thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we have some catering permits and alcohol licenses. Any question or issues with any of the catering permits and alcohol licenses? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the catering permits. Eight listed on the agenda, new license, one. License transfers, two. License renewals, fifty-seven, as listed on the agenda. Authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
Second that. Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there any discussion on any of the catering permits or license transfers? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye? Motion carries. All right. Now we have up for Clerk's Office.
Chairman, good morning, Commissioners.
We're one week out from. Welcome to our meeting.
Thank you, sir. Well, we're really one week out from a consolidated election.
Are you still saying there's gonna be a thousand seven percent turnout?
Chairman, that's correct. Our estimates are seven percent turnout. That's roughly twenty thousand ballots. And which is misleading, operationally speaking, this has been a big lift for the team. We're standing up one hundred and forty polling locations amongst the county. Seven early voting sites. We've deployed all two hundred of the cages. So it's been a big lift. And the team's done all that in the knee deep in the remodels. So good on them. And the early voting location at Benjamin is Tent City. His folks are walking through and getting a different experience. But nonetheless, we've seen seventeen hundred voters go through early voting. Star City Hall is the most popular site, oddly enough. But it does make sense. They've got the Star Protection Levy on the ballot. So show on some participation. We've seen sixty-one hundred absentee requests. The deadline was Friday. Typically, we see about eighty percent of those returned. So that would be about five thousand ballots, give or take, on absentee. We will process those on Monday, the nineteenth, so we can focus on Election Day on Tuesday, the twentieth. I want to encourage the public, this Thursday at two P M. at our Elections Warehouse, we've got our Logistics and Accuracy Test. That's where folks can interact with Clerk Tripoli and Director Saul Seiler. They go through the process, test the accuracy of the machines, do sample counts. It's a good experience for the citizens to learn more about the processes and the accuracies. And then on Friday, we start breaking down early voting sites at five o'clock. So a lot going on in the election world.
All right. Well, okay, anything else you want to tell us?
I think it'd be good for the citizens to know, Chairman, that we are not using staff services on the Elections Warehouse on Election Day. So what we're doing is certainly we have all hands on deck with the Elections Team. We're borrowing folks from next door at Records Retention Center. We bring all of our Clerk's admin and management teams, so it's about another thirty folks. And then we've got a healthy competition with staff to recruit another thirty friends and family to come help. So we'll balloon up to about eighty personnel all said and done to manage the warehouse on Election Day. So no staff services are needed, which is a good savings for taxpayer dollars.
All right, good. How's the budget coming along?
Budget on the remodel, sir?
No, the budget on the county budget.
It's a long process, sir.
Well, I get that. How's it going?
It's going good. Trent's had great meetings with elected officials and department heads. And submissions were all in before the deadline. So we've got some hands on data and starting to navigate to get ready for the presentations and upcoming deliberations, or deliberations, which are gonna be here before we know it.
Yep. Comes fast every year.
It comes really fast.
Okay. All right, any questions for the Clerk's Office? Go ahead.
Just kind of reiterate to the public, because I've had calls, out where I live, the boundaries of the library district boundaries are very erratic, as we know, the community library, as well as the reading library, those are the ones that are out where I live. And it's, some people live actually closer to a reading library, but they're in the other library district. How do people, because I keep getting those questions. If I tell them to go onto the website, what's the best way for somebody to find out? One, if there's an election that they need to be involved in, and two, where they go to vote?
Chairman, Commissioner, daily, great question. AdaCountyElections.com, and then you can click on Where to Vote. And then you can have a sublink that says What's Online Ballot? You enter in your address, and then it pops it up, and you can actually view your sample ballot. So you know exactly what you're walking into on Election Day. But you bring up a good point, though. I was looking with Anthony Locksmith, our performance analyst, and some of those boundaries are quite wonky, to say the least.
Actually, one of the people running for the unincorporated Ada County Library District lives closer to a reading library than he does to his own libraries. And he's running for one of those library district board members, which is trusty members, which is interesting, which is actually confusing to the electorate. That's why, that's what I'm telling them. I just want to make sure I was telling them the right thing, that just go to the website, and then they can actually see their own ballot.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, anything else for their deputy clerk? All right, thank you. Thank you. All right, next up, we have Claims Journal, authorizing the payment of claims made. I'll accept the motion.
I'll move to authorize payment of claims on the Claims Journal dated May ninth, two thousand twenty-five.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye? Motion carries, thank you. You have some personnel actions. I'll accept the motion on the personnel actions, unless there's questions or issues.
I move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye? Motion carries. I have operations. We have change order number one, Ada County Civic Plaza Garage Discharge Project. A decrease of thirteen thousand, one hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-six cents.
You want to tell us about that?
Mr. Chairman, that was a small project down in the bottom of the parking garage. It's a stormwater sump, and it pumps the water so we don't flood out the garage. And came in under budget. We finished the project without using all the contingency funds, and those funds are being returned to the project.
Well, great.
They're being returned, they're just not being spent, correct?
Well, that's a whole nother topic. Projects that are going on and there's.
All right. Well, thank you. I will accept a motion on change order number one.
I'll move to approve and accept change order number one for Agreement number three zero two eight eight, as listed on the agenda, and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
I second the motion.
Okay, thank you. You've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye? Well, congratulations. We like decreases in the industry. Yeah, congratulations. Great job. Now we have our distinguished Treasurer with us, Beth Maugh.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
She's got a rousing report, I can tell.
I do. It's our monthly investment report for April. I think you have some copies.
I've got one right here.
Great. And I'll turn it off to Tim to answer some questions.
So we did have a little bit of activity in April. We had a couple of bonds mature, and we purchased a couple new Treasuries. So before we get into that, if you want to look at page six, we, like we look at this one every month, because it gives us a snapshot of the interest we're earning. And as you can see, over in the totals page, you see a little bouncing around there, a million, eight hundred thousand, nine hundred, eight hundred, one point three million, et cetera. But the average is just a little bit over one million per month. This is seven months into our fiscal year. And if you take that average, you see we're, I think it's a one million, thirty-one thousand roughly each month. So that's consistent. One of the reasons we see the variable amounts is because of the way the coupon payments are on bonds. You know, they come at different times of the month. And some ones, you may not have any coupon payments, and others, you might have five. And if you look at the very first column, after the month, the Fed Agencies, that's a good one to kind of highlight that. You can see some big variances there. In March, we had the Fed Agencies paid us sixty-seven thousand, five hundred in interest on the coupons. And last month, we had a hundred thousand. But overall, if you continue to look at that average, we're just a little over a million a month. And that's sort of what we had expected when we did our forecast early last year. I want to turn to page eight. We don't often focus on this, but it's probably a good time to kind of look at that. We always look out five years to see what we have maturing. And if you look there, we, over these years, we have, you know, seven, twelve, fifteen, et cetera. And one good way to look at that is a snapshot of we've got fifty million over the next five years. And what that means is whatever rates do, we're gonna have fifty million rolling off our current portfolio that we'll be able to reinvest. And one of the reasons that's important is because with, you know, the Fed, they're talking about, are they gonna raise rates? Are they gonna keep the same? Are they gonna lower them? And one thing that's been interesting is the Fed has lowered in the past six months a little bit. And I can't remember, I think it was in September or October, we saw them go fifty basis points. And what is interesting is we saw the yields on the longer bonds kind of tick up. And that's sort of what affects mortgage rates. And typically, you don't see those if you go back historically. As the Fed starts lowering, all the way across the curve, things tend to lower. But with the debt that the U.S. has and the concerns of other countries trying to potentially not use the U.S. dollar as much, they're still, that's still the primary method, it's gonna be for a long time. But what that tells us when you look at this is if the longer rates go up, then as that, we're gonna get this fifty million, and we'll be able to redeploy that at higher yields. So that's just part of our strategy, allows us to take advantage of that. And it gives us some comfort knowing that even if the rates go up, we have money coming in that we can redeploy. And if you turn to page eleven, I could just focus for a moment here on the two that matured in April. And right in the middle there, you see the purchase date and you see the rate at maturity. So we had one that was paying us just a little over three percent, and one that was paying just seventy-five basis points. And if you look to the left of that, you'll see the purchase date and the year. And those years that we purchased it in that time really indicates why the rate was what it is at that time. So those two came in, a little bit under seven million dollars. And the next page, if you look at that in comparison, if you look at the yield to maturity, which is at the far right, second to last column, we went from a little over three and point seven five, and now we've redeployed that just under eight million at the higher yield. So that's beneficial for us, and that sort of highlights what I was explaining before with that fifty million that we've got coming in. If rates tick up like they have, since those last two purchases were made, and we redeployed those higher yields, so that's good for us. And this particular page, I noticed something on this that really sort of gives us a clean way of looking at something that we haven't really talked about in the past. And if you see there, these two, these are Treasuries, and they're just two year before they mature. So they're fairly short duration for us. And right in the middle, you'll see the purchase date. The purchase date was April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five for both of these. And if you look across to the column, and it's two or three over called accrued at purchase. And you see the one U.S. Treasury, there was no, no dollar, not at all accrued at purchase. And the bond just below that, it shows the accrued at purchase was a little over forty-three thousand. And you all may know this, but maybe not. The way bonds work is if you buy an existing bond, and you buy it in April thirtieth, like we did for both of these, and if you look at the payment date, the payment date on the one on the bottom is six thirty. And the way bonds work is whoever owns the bond at the time the payment is made is entitled to that payment. And since we bought this bond from some other party, the only way they're gonna get their interest accrued at that date, because we're gonna get the payment on six thirty, is we have to pay for that upfront. So we buy the bond, and we pay them forty-three thousand, ninety-three dollars and ninety-two cents. And if you go to the very front of our summary, and this is why it's clean, because typically we'll have several on there with purchase accrued. But for this particular month, we didn't have any purchase accrued, except for the one. And as you can see right in the middle of the page, cash and accrued interest, it shows forty-three thousand, ninety-three, ninety-two. And so what happens is when we get that bond payment on six thirty, let's say it's fifty thousand. We're gonna get the fifty thousand, but we're not gonna record on page six on that blue graph that we got all of that interest. What we're gonna do is net it against what we had to prepay to the prior bond owner. And so in this example, we'll make just around seven thousand. And so whenever you see that on the front, that's what that means. And we're just basically prepaying the bond interest that the other party is entitled to. I haven't really had a chance to explain that in the past, but I just thought that this is a good opportunity to kind of talk about that. Other than that, I mean, we're just kind of plugging along. The yields on the short end of the curve, which highly affects our L G I F, and our money markets is dropping. And so if you go to the far right column on the front page, the yield to maturity, and you look at that total down below, three point nine eight six, it's slightly lower than it was last month. And the reason for that is because we have a lot of money in cash that's highly affected by the current rates. And so we dropped a little bit below four on our yield to maturity in the overall portfolio. Hearing none, I don't really have any more comments unless you all have any questions for me.
All right, any questions from the Board?
No questions, just comments. I appreciate Tim's explanation there, because it was, it shows the value of how they're investing in terms of long term, short term, maximizing both of those. So I appreciate your information.
Now, the interest that we pay at closing, if the other party is entitled to it, do we pay it with the settlement of the amount we paid to them?
We do, yeah. And so if we buy the bond and we have to pay one point five million for that, it's gonna be the one point five million plus whatever interest. In this case, the forty-three thousand. So we pay one point five million, forty-three thousand, and we get that payment in. We're only counting as interest the seven thousand and net of that, because the other's just return of principal for us.
You just give them a gold bullion?
They might like that. Gold's been pretty high lately.
Yeah. All right, any questions? Any other questions from the Board? Thank you.
Appreciate it, yeah.
Okay. Well, hey.
Richard.
We're here. We have Development Services, Application two zero two two zero one six two four S. Final flat. Any questions or issues on this final flat? I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the final flat for, with the amended finding of spike in the Constitution of Law from Application two zero two two zero one six two four dash S. Are you so vision, sub, view subcommittee, subdivision?
Are a so vision, sub, view subdivision, subdivision, as listed on the agenda.
Okay. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
Okay. You've heard the motion. Is there any questions? Go ahead.
Well, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, typically we'd have you approve and authorize the chair to sign and stand.
Yeah. Excuse me.
And sign and stand.
That needs to be made to the, the motion, yes.
The chairman to assign and stand.
I guess the secondor approves it. I'll second that. Okay. All right, we got that, we got that down. Is there any other questions or any other issues? Okay. You've heard the motion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, thank you. Next up, we have application two zero two four zero one two five three S, Leon Acres subdivision. Is Leon here?
He's here, but not.
Okay, any questions or issues with this one? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
I'll move to approve the final plat for case number two zero two four zero one two five three dash S, Leon Acres subdivision and authorize the chair to stamp the final plat on behalf of the board. And sign.
And sign it.
And sign it.
Okay.
I second the motion.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, thank you. All right, next up we have the approval of the minutes.
I, I move to approve the minutes, the open business meeting on five prime twenty twenty five and tax intention hearing for thirty twenty twenty five and authorize the chair to sign the document on behalf of the board.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, next we have some agreements with Western Idaho Fair, four internet agreements, five commercial exhibits and nine concessionaire exhibits. Any question or discussion about any of these agreements? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, we've got to make a motion. Excuse me.
I was going to say we have to have a motion.
Yeah, let's have a motion.
Should we do Expo Idaho?
Yeah, that's what this is. All right. Aye. No, we have to have a motion.
I'll move to approve the Expo Idaho agreements as listed on the agenda.
And I second the motion.
And authorize the chair to sign on behalf of the board.
And I second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, next up we have nine agreements. I reviewed the agreements. Is there any question or issues with any of the agreements? Chair?
Yes. Did you have something, Ben?
I do, yes. Just a comment and clarification for item number six, that's agreement one three seven seven one dash seven two five. This is for the Treasurer's Office and specifically for our Public Administration Division. That's where we are the court-appointed administrator for states of, states of decedents. This agreement is for biohazard remediation services. So it's to help us clean up these residences. So it appears that there's a typo listed on the agenda. It says personal property retention. I believe it is personal property remediation.
Okay.
Also note, this is an existing contract for the current fiscal year. It's just a name change.
Okay, so we've got that noted. The clerk will, will make note of that. It is not retention, it's remediation.
Correct.
Okay, any other questions or discussions?
Well, just follow up on that. So the county is obligated if there is a deceded in the home that we're obliga, or your office is obligated to clean it up? And is that because they don't have any heirs or any other owners of the property?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Davis, that, that is correct. So we, we're working with the coroner's office to identify next of kin and heir, someone to take over the estate. Once we've exhausted all options there, the magistrate court does appoint us after we petition the court for that appointment. And then we go in and with the help of a vendor like this, clean out, clean out the residence to make it saleable or.
None of that's done until the court has authorized it.
That, that is correct.
And there's been extensive investigation to make sure there's no other, no other family or other heirs.
Correct. And I'll also note from a financial perspective, the county in, in this type of situation, there are sufficient assets to cover this cost. So we might have to pay the cost upfront, but then from the sale of the proceeds, or the proceeds from the sale of the residence, then we would recoup this cost.
Any other question on any of these agreements?
No, we've got one here, number eight, which is related to the pathway at, on Glenwood, near the fairgrounds. Maybe operations could talk about that.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, with the remodel of the park at Expo Idaho, we identified some auxiliary paths that connect to the park that have, that are in just bad condition. And we felt it was best to address and rehabilitate those pathways as we're bringing on this new park. So the agreement that you see in front of you, we're paying a local design firm. And it's a design firm that we have, part of our pre-selected group. He's done a lot of design, K P F F Group has done a lot of green belt design. So this agreement is to start the construction documents and then we will put that out to bid to rehabilitate all those pathways around Expo and specifically the one along Glenwood.
So this is not only to rehabilitate, but then to divert during construction?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, it, yeah, good question. So with the remodel of the park or the, the construction of the park, we had to shut down Remington Street. And as you may know, you've received some emails of concerned citizens that don't have an alternate path to use. So to your point, Mr. Chairman, yes, this will also be identified as a safe alternate pathway to access the green belt from the Garden City side via Fifty Second Street over to Glenwood and back once again to the green belt. Yes, sir.
Okay, any other questions or discussion? Yes, go ahead.
Just, just for the public. And there will be signage there for that so that we won't, when there's a closure, all the appropriate places will be so that there's an alternative route, correct?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we will include ample signage. There'll be ADA access, truncated domes, everything necessary to make it a safe, safe pathway and especially at the signage. Yes, sir.
Okay, any other questions or discussion? I'll accept the motion.
I move to approve the eight agreements as listed on I, Jim, or nine, oh, yeah. There are nine, so they appear, but there are nine. As listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next up we have indigent items. Any question or issues on the indigent items? I'll accept a motion.
I'll move to accept the recommendations of the indigent services staff as listed on the summary of cases dated May thirteenth, twenty twenty five and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, is there any other business that needs to be brought before the board today? All right, we're adjourned. Thank you.